I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is states by mission, kind of God, in the name of all the liberty and justice for all.
People here may not okay, so I need to do this. Okay. How are we? Okay. I'll use the mic. Yes. Uh, just with the agenda, uh, we have under new business, uh, picking four, in fact, it's actually discussed personal matters, we're going to one, and I'm gonna say four, five, six, eight. And five, approval of minutes from September 26th, 2019. Do I have a motion on that?
No motion.
By my excitement, by having any discussion, any errors of emissions in those? Wow. You're doing a good job on those. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 26th, 2019? And under communications, my, oh, and CJ's floor.
Good evening. Um, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come to people leave tonight. We wanna, um, talk to you about a program called Unified Basketball. Uh, Unified Basketball is a program that is Maine Principals Association, uh, program, and, uh, also in partnership with Special Olympics. Um, so, beginning in January, we would, um, start with a basketball team that would comprise both unified athletes, which are those that would qualify for Special Olympics, and then what are called unified partners, which are, um, other students in the school that might be interested in being part of the program. Uh, it runs from basically the beginning of January, uh, to a week or so into March. Games would start around the third week of January, and then, um, the last regular day would be the first week of March, and then there would be some sort of, well, there's two ways you can go about it. One, you could be part of the state championship direction and try to win a gold ball for the program, and then there's another program where it's more, a lot less competitive and more, um, just, uh, go out and play, learn the game, enjoy the game, meet new people, um, those kinds of things, develop partnerships. Um, so, basically, the way the game works is on the floor at all times, you have three unified athletes, which are those who qualify through Special Olympics, and you have two unified partners. Um, there are specific rules to the game so that it's, uh, it's equal, and it's mostly comprised of the athletic ability and, and the participation of the unified athletes. The partners are there really to help them understand the game, help them with the rules, help them with the skills, um, and I think there's a rule that 75% of the points have to be scored by a unified athlete, uh, or you, uh, combined. So, really, what we're looking for right now is looking for approval to move forward, um, and see if we have the interest within our student body, um, both on the unified partner aspect and as well as unified athletes. Um, this is a program that the first two years, we can, uh, receive assistance in Special Olympics of Maine. Uh, first year, we would be able to apply for $2,500, and then the second year would be $2,000, and then the hopes, uh, by that time, by the time the third year comes around, that it will be part of the, um, athletic budget at that point in time. So, uh, we're just looking for approval from the school board to see if we can pursue this type of program.
Any questions for?
Is this coed or are there two separate teams?
It is coed, yes. Mike?
Uh, it's not a question, but it's moral comment. So Oxford Hills has a unified basketball team, and it is fantastic. Uh, so if it runs, little word to the Lions during the Winter Carnival Assembly at Oxford Hills, the unified team plays staff. So it's a really fun event. Uh, you know, you get the whole credit, you get the entire school in on it, and you know, it's a sold-out game basically for them, but just an idea, but it's a great program.
And some of the things that we've heard, um, from Special Olympics in Maine is that games are better off to be played right after school, um, that way student body can stay and be supportive, and that, um, you know, from what they've seen in different schools that do this, it really makes a difference in inclusion of all students, all students within the school, not necessarily just, um, on the basketball court, but it really, um, brings the school together.
Yes, is the preference to play is not up that haven't made, tried out, but haven't made the basketball team as tightness, or?
Um, actually, there is a stipulation that they cannot be varsity athletes, um, that are participating in basketball. So, you know, they may be a varsity athlete in field hockey or football or something like that, they cannot be on the varsity basketball programs.
Would $2,500 be sufficient to run the program in the first term?
That's a good question. I mean, I think what we're looking at is, we're looking at a coach. Um, we'd have to go through and look at our, um, the way that we break down with our stipend sheet. Uh, it's not an everyday thing. It's once, twice a week practice, and then, once you get into game season, then it's like once a week at a game. So it's not an everyday thing. It's not a, you know, like a varsity coach where you're paying somebody six to 10 hours a week, and five days a week, and that kind of stuff. And it's not traveling 18 times like you were, nine times like you would with a, with a varsity basketball coach. We a lot less travel. Uh, we look to programs that are in our area. There are a lot of our Mountain Valley Conference teams that, um, that have, or schools that have programs, Mountain Valley, uh, being one of them, you know, so they're a lot closer, and we're not having to travel all the long ways. And I think probably we'd look at six games or so, so if you figure that out half and half, you're talking maybe three trips. So it's not a whole lot of the transportation side. Um, equipment is pretty much standard. Um, we do have, we do have uniforms that are in really great condition, um, that we can, you know, put a team in, so that wouldn't be an issue. Um, and I think we've actually kind of talked about some people who might be interested in coaching and stepping forward to do that, so whether they want to volunteer or, um, be paid for that, we'd have to figure that out, so.
Would you be coming back to us with a, a more firm amount before final approval to, to go forward?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking, we wanna look at the budget, we wanna look at the number of kids that might be involved, both on the unified partner and the unified athlete, um, making sure we have somebody that's interested in coaching, and then we can kind of come back and, you know, get that. Uh, it would have to be done, um, uh, at the November meeting, because we have to, or early November, because we do have to commit, uh, in early November, in order to be get into the schedule and that kind of thing with the MPA.
Andrew? Is this the same program I saw recently about that Handen Academy plays, they have a unified team that they've been quite successful with?
Uh, I know, I'm not sure about Handen Academy. I know Madison has been really good, Lisbon has been really good in the past, and, you know, again, some of those teams are, are playing for the gold ball. I think Madison won the gold ball last year. Um, Lisbon has been state championship over the past couple of years, but, you know, for us, right now, I think, yeah, that the way to go is, is the participation piece.
No? No TJ?
My question is, would we be, we'd be selling concessions? I would hope.
I would hope so.
Is there gonna be a charge to get in, or donations, something, that money that could go toward the program?
If, if we are charging at the gate, then that money would go back to the program.
Thank you. P. Bennett?
Uh, the gentleman that actually brought this to us this year, he doesn't like a lot of recognition, it is, uh, Mr. Gary DeJavons, he, he actually has put on a lot of work and pushed us to get to this point. Look at him. And, uh, he does have some things that he'd like to share with you, uh, and a couple handouts that would actually explain a little bit more about the Unified Arts, too, so.
I'll pass them off, please.
Yep. Neil?
Just a comment, I've heard that Unified Arts program actually outdraws the regular basketball teams of the number of schools.
I've, I've heard that, yes.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion here?
No. Make sure we get all the questions answered. If no other questions, do we have a motion? Okay. Do you mean a motion to support the Unified Basketball program? Do we have a motion to support the program? We have a second. P. Bennett, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor supporting Unified Arts. Action, yes.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Do you have any public comments?
All right. I did this last week, but as you guys know, it does entail the end of our last meeting. Sorry, I was traveling forward. Um, I was fortunate enough to be able to go into one of the classrooms, um, because of an idea my son had, Dante. Uh, I was reading him his bedtime story, and he insisted that he wanted me to read to his Godzilla. And as I was reading the story, he took the book from me and started reading to Godzilla for me. And it kind of put an idea in my head that children often feel more comfortable reading to stuffed animals, their toys, rather than people themselves, because they feel self-conscious. So I spoke with Mrs. Lake over at the elementary school, and I was able to bring in, um, stuffed animals and two books for each of the children in their classroom, just as a test drive to see if it would work. Her class was kind enough to each individually write me a letter of thank you, and I just wanted to share with the board, because these are really sweet.
Any other board comments? To presentation.
I wanted to make sure to thank Chris Holmsworth for going above and beyond these past two weeks when it comes to technology. I also wanted to thank Mike Bonamy for also stepping up these past two weeks as well. Uh, I continue to be busy with meetings. On Monday, the 30th, I attended breakfast with local superintendents to discuss topics that we were all facing. Later that day, I also met with day one administration with Mr. Floyd and Mr. Henderson to see where we are at in the hiring process. Uh, Wednesday, October 2nd, I had a meeting, breakfast meeting, love breakfast, not good for my waistline. Uh, breakfast meeting with town managers and business manager Crystal Flag. Uh, we're gonna try to do that monthly. Uh, that evening, I was a part of the buildings and grounds meeting with the Division of Energy. On October 3rd, I spent the day in Farmington with the superintendent's assistant superintendents and curriculum coordinators for the WMEC, topics discussing organization bylaws, mission and vision. We also worked on organizing a rendezvous workshop scheduled for March, I have over 1,500 educators attending. In the afternoon, we also had discussions on chronic absenteeism. On Friday, I had lunch with Doug and TJ in the high school cafeteria. That was a fun afternoon. Uh, on Monday, October 7th, I met with the director of local nursery school to discuss concerns in relation to the possibility of a state CSD transferring the responsibility of three-year-old services to the school districts. Uh, that's still being discussed at the state level. Uh, later that afternoon, I met with our new RTI interventionist candidate. Um, on Wednesday, Bob and I attended a legislative breakfast put on by the Western Maine Superintendent's Association. We had a good discussion on upcoming bills that are going into full legislation this year. Later on the day, Crystal Flag and I met with Ed Ants from Maine School Management. We had a discussion on, and a lesson, as well as a discussion on workers' complaints. Today, I attended an all-day training by the Maine School Superintendent's Association in Augusta, a training session with our negotiations. I hope everyone will enjoy their long upcoming weekend.
Any questions for Scott? The Ministry of Rewards, uh, do you do? Or should I say Mr. Thomas, Mrs. Thomas, hold on a second.
So, um, past two or three weeks, it's been pretty busy at the high school. We had homecoming. I don't know if any of you have ever been to one of our homecomings, but, uh, they're really eventful, and, uh, we had a pretty good time. Our students participated in a lot of different things going on. Uh, we did raise quite a few, quite a bit money for, uh, local fundraisers that we've had going on with the board, uh, family, and things that, uh, associated with that. Um, I also wanted to, uh, let everybody know that, uh, Mr. Keller and the Lee family are putting together a fundraiser, uh, and they're taking over the Jake Lord Foundation gang. Uh, if you have any interest in participating in that, uh, please contact Mr. Keller about that. Uh, again, homecoming, great time, we moved on through that. We are starting our student assemblies this month. We never do it on September because we have so much going on. Uh, you are invited at the end of the month, October, uh, it's the last Friday of October, if you'd like to come. PSATs start next week. That is a sophomore exam. Uh, it, it helps them prepare for the SATs. New IS, uh, the high school has finished all their new IS on the month of September, and we're looking at, uh, that data as we move forward throughout the school year. College and career planning, tomorrow we have a workshop, uh, that is designed for a, a program that we have, it's called NAVIANS, and our teachers are gonna get trained in the morning, uh, regarding how to help the students, uh, better navigate the program, and also working towards common apps, college and career, uh, assessments, as well as interest, interest levels. Uh, it is also another program that we're using for, uh, senior portfolios. So, as we move forward, you'll be hearing a little bit more, uh, associated with the NAVIANS program. That's all I have.
Any questions for TJ?
What was the last?
Go ahead.
What was the last Friday?
I can't remember the date, let me look.
No, I mean, what was the?
It's an assembly, yeah, student awards assembly.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, next week, NHS, October 7th.
Yeah.
Well, parents, you learning about NAVIANS?
Absolutely. So it is a not, it is a parent portal that goes with it, so you can keep track of where your student is. That will all be going out as soon as my staff gets trained. Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, DJ. Welcome. Yep.
Good evening. Um, everything's been going pretty well, the facilities and staff so far. Uh, we do have one employee that's gonna be out from November 4th until, we're not sure yet, coming back, but he's had a knee surgery, so he won't be filling in for that position. Uh, I know tonight you'll be going around, uh, workshops, I didn't go a whole bunch on my head, but I think this cabinet will show you all the things, but I'm sure it'll show you the new storage building out back, uh, which was waiting for a door, and just found out we got the door in the day, so that door will be going on that, so we can stabilize it. Uh, you see, if you go to the left out there by the well, you'll see a new wellhouse, see a new chain fence out back. Um, you're also gonna see a new room, and I'm sure he'll show you that, because that's what he really likes. He's the one upstairs that he has for the program. Um, hopefully the electric shall come in tomorrow. He said he would, I mean, let's sort of finish that up, and then Monday we'll finish waxing the floor in the morning. Uh, also on Monday, Monday, we have sprinkling systems coming in, and they're gonna recharge the, the N freeze and sprinkling system upstairs. It's a, it's a situation we've had for a couple of years now, and, and we discussed it last year at the beginning, and, and so we put it in budget, and, uh, and I guess it's something we should have added before, luckily we didn't have any freeze out, so. Um, since we started heating, heating systems up in the school buildings, we have, we have caught with a lot of, a lot of automation problems. Uh, you know, I like to think that everything ran very smooth and went well, but it hasn't. Uh, Monday, Siemens sent two people out and sat down and went through all the automations. Uh, there's a lot of things they're gonna have to correct, there's a lot of things that, that haven't been put into the system and were supposed to be put in the system. Um, so hopefully that will get on board. Uh, there's a lot of little minor things, but I think things that we can certainly, we can certainly work through and get, get caught with quickly. Uh, the new pickup has come in at Bailey's, uh, we'll hopefully be getting the plow next week and be getting that. And since we're on that, we do have one bid that come in, and that was from Chris Donley, and that was for $96,000. Um, there's a new sign attached to the football, up in the football there. We've got a new, uh, scoreboard this year, you all know, and, and white sign, white sign, the sign works. Build a new sign, if you look, if you look at it, it's right hung at the bottom of the, of the scoreboard that says, "To Griffin Field." Um, the SRO, Darren Gilbert, our student resource officer, Karen Barnes, myself, attended a training in Hussin, uh, last Friday. It was on student safety assessment. It's a, it's a piece that we hope to certainly institute into a emergency management plan. It was, it was a very, very, um, interesting, um, workshop for the day, at one rate directed from eight o'clock into four o'clock, and we heard about all the school shootings that's happened over the last hundred years, actually. And it's, and I think now the trend is, people are realizing that most schools are coming down with a good policy and a plan for the lockdowns and the lockouts and, and for evacuation and things, and, and then those are still things that are very important that we gotta go on, but to, to implement this group safety assessment is, I think is gonna be a very important piece, if it's something that we can stop before the, the incident happens. Uh, so hopefully that, when we have our next meeting in November, this will be an important piece that we'll be speaking about in our committee. Um, also, we have, we still haven't heard anything on the COP, COP grant. Uh, we've followed with, with Arishu Nine and the surrounding police departments, but we've been told that we'll definitely hear something by the end of October. Tomorrow, we will find out over at the, uh, meeting of the Craig and Company EMA, over to the, uh, crime and police department, if we're gonna get the grant for the nightlocks. Nightlocks, which will put in, will be instituted into this building, the high school and middle school. So hopefully that works out great, and we'll find out tomorrow that we, we're gonna receive that. That's all I have.
Any questions, Joe?
I, I mentioned this to Scott a little earlier tonight, um, but I figured it's appropriate to send it your way. With everything that's gone on, we all know in our community and whatnot, I see the legislature's actually starting to look at doing detectors. They're talking about a possible bill requiring explosive detectors inside a building, public buildings and whatnot. What we've had here, apparently, you said, I think it was Thornton or somewhere else?
Thorne, I think.
Thorne Dyke had an issue today. Um, have you saw that, or have you had any discussions, though, especially since we just converted a lot of our buildings to propane, uh, looking at, um, adding in sensors into our building management systems and other things like that?
Uh, we, we have thought about that. Actually, actually, I do, I did just purchase, just got one, one detector. We just got a sniff detector to go around sniff and to find out if something could play about a leak, we can go find, at least we can get a leak. And, um, and I also got one sensor detector that we're gonna put into the, into the high school, so up, but not towards the ballroom, but, but actually with the main propane comes in through, so. We'll get that installed this, before next week, and then we can certainly purchase more.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, I'm, I'm interested, I'm assuming they have them out there, and I think, I would think, um, both for around tanks, the boilers themselves, as well as kitchens and our labs, uh, just to look at locations where we feel this might be possible. I, I don't know where Augusta's gonna go, but I think for a lot of us, it probably makes sense that maybe we're a little ahead of the curve, but, so.
Yeah, I, we can probably tell we could get, we could get several more.
Doug?
Uh, a question about the snow a little bit. What was the price of paint last year?
Ninety-five.
And this legacy, is that including the, um, central office?
It's not.
So it's everything else, except for that office, and you're still paying an extra thousand?
Anyone else?
There was no more, no interest in any other bids at all again this year?
We, we didn't write in the paper this year, but we, we spent so much money on the paper that we don't, we don't get any bid. I did send it out personally to, um, Yalvini and, who's not, so.
Thank you, Ken. Jim?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I talked about the bus training, we completed the bus training, uh, through pre-kay through the fifth grade. Uh, it took about three weeks. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Sean Keane and Paula Givens for doing all the training. Um, Sean has put it right up on the website under the transportation tab. There's a couple of pictures in there. Um, she's got a picture of the bus seat that we use, it's on wheels and stuff, um, and they, and she wrote up everything, what they went over with the students. Um, that's good, and I brought in, over on the table, there's a bunch of the kids, they have the pictures that they brought in, so, on the school bus, they think, so they're on the table, you guys can look at them when you want. Um, the new bus has been ordered, uh, that's about 90 days out, and the grand bus that we, that we received from the grand last year that will leave the factory on the 23rd of this month, so we should have it at the end of the month. Uh, hopefully in service by that time. Um, on the 27th, the day after the, the last meeting, I sat in on a Zoom webinar on the new bus purchase system that the state uses. Uh, it was about, uh, almost an hour. Uh, it was, it's a good system, it's really easy, and you click, click the buttons, and it adds up to your totals as you go, with the three vendors that the state uses. Um, so that was good, uh, good information, and you can, you can log, keep all your buses in there, so you can look back if you wanna get another one, or you wanna change something from year to year, you can have, they're all in the base. Uh, and, uh, starting at the end of the month, I'm gonna start riding the, all the buses, all the bus routes, checking on bus lines, driver interaction with the students, overall operation of the bus, how they're doing. Uh, I'll be also watching the monitors and their effectiveness with the students, and how they were with the bus truck.
Any questions for Joe?
How do they deliver the bus? Do they drive it here, or do they?
Yep. They drive, the company, they'll, they'll go to Kennabon, where we get it from, and a salesman and some guy will bring it up and go over the bus and train us on anything that's new from, different than anything.
P. Bennett?
Um, as per the, uh, bus monitoring, um, just wanted to give a kudos to Red every morning. My son gets really excited to see him, and they always say good morning and goodbye, and it's just really nice interaction.
Good, thank you, I'll let him know.
Yep.
Just so you're aware, you must be aware that, uh, Room 4 is gonna be closed next Thursday and Friday?
Yes, yep. It'll make it interesting downtown for a little while.
Kevin?
It's not the place, but which section?
It's just, it's just the railroad tracks that they're gonna be closed, so you'll be able to go around Water Street.
Okay, but I can get across the bridge if I'm looking.
You can get across the bridge, yeah, you just have to go down and cut through Water Street.
Anyone else? Thank you. Robert?
Uh, yesterday, we had our culinary orientation for both employers and prospective students. Uh, we hosted six local restaurant owners who came in, uh, we kind of packed out what the curriculum could look like, and we got their feedback on what they needed for, um, students to be successful when they go on to their work experience with them. to be successful when they go on to their work experience with them. Uh so six have signed online with Department of Labor, uh they'll be doing work experiences with our students in three-week rotations. The students will be paid, it's like a early learn program. So they'll do ten weeks in our classroom and they'll be um in their rotations at the same time. That starts October. Um I want to make you aware that our enrollment for High Stat and Diploma Services has taken a sharp increase. We enrolled nine new students in five days, two weeks ago. There are a lot of people coming out in the community that do not have a high school diploma and they've learned about our services, so it's a big tax on uh Betsy and Michelle. So just keep that in mind if you hear that we're not meeting the needs, um we've adjusted the schedule to the best of our ability. We've started to take hours away on Monday mornings and put them at night. We've had our local business reach out and say that they're going to work with us, that they'll hire people contingent upon finishing their high school credential with us, which I think that's what I've been saying for the last three years, like, don't just discard those applications, bring them to us, let us work with them, and then hire them on. So that's worked out really well. Um I just have two employees teaching the classroom, so it's difficult, we have a large increase in student population. Um and for the next year, our student count is going to look a little bit different. We have a new CASIS, it's a federal test, and it's of course filtered down to a local level, um but it will change the way that we count students, so before we could count anyone that was functioning below a twelfth-grade level in our student counts, um now if they're at a ninth-grade level or above, they do not count for us. It's very different, even if they don't have a high school diploma and they're receiving services from us. They feel as though ninth grade is the cutoff, if it's less than that, that's the level of literacy that we're integrating with and all that, they don't have to, so. We served a hundred and one people in our community last year that did not have a high school diploma, that were functioning below a twelfth-grade level, that number's gonna look different at the end of the year report, so I just wanna make you aware of that, we're not serving fewer people, it's just the way that the tables will look on the state reports now.
But you can still count us.
Absolutely, yes, we'll still keep tracking that, but just when you get that hard copy from the state and says we serve fifty people, it's not that we've taken a big dip, um it's just what the data looks like within testing. Questions about that?
Any questions?
I think I heard on the radio today that you're gonna be at Franklin Memorial thing this weekend?
Yeah, so uh Franklin Memorial is hosting students from UNE for their rural immersion program, so we'll be there to talk about our partnership with the CMA program and how valuable adult education is for a community at large, especially in rural areas, so that the men students are aware of that when they're going to.
Any other questions? Tina?
Hi. Okay, can you hear me? Talk close. Um so the past month, I'll just kind of overview some of the items that I've been focusing on since the last quarter update. Um I've been able to present to the staff at the elementary, middle, and high school settings about the overview of the changes within the 504 structure, um tomorrow morning. Thank you, Mr. Carrington. Um we'll finish up that presentation by doing that at the primary school. Um within Power School, I tagged each student on the on the caseload with a flag that shows 504 combination, so then as as teachers go in and look at their students, they can immediately visually have that visual cue um to look for that 504 accommodation plan. Last year at the high school, there was a pilot program where they were um Cindy Perry was really instrumental in this with TJ, I think, with putting in the 504 accommodation accommodations themselves directly in a power school. Um I met with Scott Lab last month because unfortunately it happened to be under a tab called IEP notes, and it's not an IEP, so um Scott and I were talking about creating a custom screen that will actually say the 504 accommodation plan. Um he thinks it's a simple thing to create a custom screen in there, I'm hoping he's right, um it seems like that's a little bit on hold right now, um but when he gets back, we should talk about what that looks like. He assures me it's a pretty simple task, but so that will be our goal, is to be able to have those plans cut, copy, paste it in there for instant access for staff, and you don't have to go on and look for a document that someone gave you or an electronic email. Um I did follow up with uh development of a section 504 referral form that's been distributed to the counselors um in the in the building, so and they've been using it, oh, sorry, uh they've been using it because we got four of them in the past week. Um so we have six open referral cases right now, um four of them new in the past week, and two students who transferred in with uh current 504 plans um since last meeting. Um I did order the updated section 504 um management system that's put out by Drummond Woodson, we ordered it uh probably four years ago, I think it was two thousand and fifteen when it first came out, um they've updated it and there are some changes in it, so we purchased it, it arrived in the mail today, so um I have been working on creating 504 um forms and all of those documents for the district. Um I'll review those against the new ones to make sure they're all up to date and I'll generate all of those for um for hopefully incorporation on our website. I also met with Scott Lab about creating a section 504 page, sorry, I'm looking all just one step one side, a section 504 page on the website, so that all of those forms, information, handbook, um anything that people need, either a staff member or a parent or community member, is accessible. Um so that is another piece that we'll get to with the tech department when they're able to handle that that piece of the load. Um the handbook will be shared with you for approvals, Mr. Albert and I talked about that, 'cause you typically like to review handbooks before they go out anywhere, so this has been generated by Drummond, so I assume it's all up to snuff. Um but just be watching for that in your um email in the next couple of weeks for your review before we post anything or distribute anything to parents. Um so I think that's that's it. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Kevin?
So we have child count that's coming up, if to make sure that we report to the state all of the kids in the district that are in special education. Um and since the last time that I saw you, I think last time I reported, we had twenty-one or thirty students that we were up as of today. Forty-one students with special needs moved in, twenty students moved out of the district. We currently have fifteen referrals in process, so if you do all that math, we're up thirty-six students. We are being audited this year by the Department of Education, and so I had Barbara McGowan, who's the financial crew group for the special ed department there, come in and work with Julia, myself, and Crystal. Um she's ended day with us, this was a couple of weeks ago, so that we were able to ask her all kinds of questions, and she was able to look at our stuff and give us some guidance. Um last Friday, I had Roberta Lucas, who's the final coordinator, sort of in charge of um when schools are audited for special ed, so I had her come in through the afternoon and Julia and I sat down with her and picked her brain for a couple of hours. Our K-12 behavior programs, the staff are all being trained um to create a continuity and philosophy and programming using a Boys Town model. Boys Town's an actual town, Nebraska. It's very, yeah, right. Uh it's research-based, it's good stuff, the trainer's awesome, it was me. Um so they have been trained for three days, um and there's other staff, the support staff are gonna be trained for uh two days coming up each. Uh last time I met with you, we were able to approve license clinical social work for the primary and the elementary school. We had some inquiries and one really solid client, uh person that's interested in the position, so that's exciting, given it's been a short time. Um I've been meeting with Ed Tex every late arrival day, which has been pretty awesome because um we're taking topics that they're interested in and giving them PD in that hour's time, which has been something they've just really appreciated. Tomorrow, I get to meet with all the case managers at one time, 'cause as you can imagine, they'll be scheduled at the beginning of the year, it's hard to coordinate getting all of those folks in the same room at the same time, so tomorrow I'm able to do that. And I think that's it. I wanna say thank you to Tina and Julia, because when you come into a size in a school district and everyone seems to know my free item and clueless, they've really been um they've just been super kind about just updating me so that I can be more effective quicker, um so just wanna say thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, Phil? You said we had thirty new students come into the district?
We had forty-one students who moved into the district who already had an IEP.
So we will be staffed now to support our few at this point, huh?
We will be, you'll be seeing me in a couple of weeks. Yeah, we have to, because we need a program that could not have forced them in, and there they are, yeah.
Whether it's online, you come with one-on-ones or a little?
Yeah, our staff is pretty stretched.
Is it usual, like, if they're playing in and out or?
It it is, it is, but we have heard that um our next-door neighbors in Farmington are also going through the same thing, so people move out, they move in, and it just happens to be that we ended up with thirty-six extra that we hadn't anticipated.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin. Laura?
So good evening. It's been a busy thirty days, I guess we could say, in the Food and Nutrition Department. Um kind of a a lot has transpired in the last thirty days. We have gone ahead and started with our fresh proven vegging grant, um started a week ago with this past week, um so the kids were really glad to see that, and for those that aren't familiar with that, that's in all of the schools with the exception of the high school, um and that's been offered to them three times during the week, so to be able to create that, I understand. Um our pilot program that we started in that elementary school for the breakfast in the classroom, in the classroom, um worked really, really good. We did the three weeks uh for the fifth grade population, the numbers were really outstanding and encouraging. Uh the next, on the fourth week, we started in with the third grade, um and the following week, we went ahead and and at this point with the whole building. Um so in realizing our numbers now that we are through the building, we are right around seventy-five percent uh feeding breakfast to our population, which I think is really outstanding, so it's a win-win all the way around, it's a win for the students, they start their day satisfied, um it's a win for the teachers, they're coming directly into the classroom, there's not a lot of shifting and movement in the hallways, I think the um the building itself, that they're all feeling very good about that, and it's a win for us because we know that breakfast we are gonna get reimbursed for. So um with that, I hope you're all pleased with that. Um and then moving forward for other buildings, I have been looking into uh working with the state of Maine for breakfast after the bell grants. I've currently written three grants for a high school, our middle school, as well as the elementary school, um and that's primarily to get equipment, so like carts, milk coolers to keep the the to transport those things back down to the building. We kind of had to pillage, you know, to get these items down to the elementary school so that we'd have the totes and all the things that we needed, so hopefully we can get those back to where they need to be, and uh it it's looking very good as as far as with the state. They had pretty much told me earlier in the week that it was a guarantee um that we would get our funding for the three buildings, so I thought that was really encouraging, and then I kind of continued to push the envelope and think of a little bit more of ways that we might be able to benefit from that, so we're kind of at a status quo, just holding right now before we finalize it, 'cause I'm really looking at other things that I might be able to tack on uh to that grant. One of the things that we did include in the three buildings was um new POS systems, so we'll definitely be upgrading um some of our uh equipment, so I think that's really good for us, so um that's what's going on there, and I guess that's about it unless somebody has very specific questions wanting.
Joel?
Just wondering, you said you got the elementary school up to seventy-five percent on Mercurus, where did it start before you started doing those?
So at the beginning of the year, we, the first few days, we did forty-four percent and fifty-one percent. Um the first week, we averaged out about fifty-three percent. Um then, once we went into the first class, the fifth grade population, I was realizing numbers between sixty-five and sixty-seven percent. Um not only are we seeing it in the breakfast, but it's spilling over into the lunch program as well, and I don't really wanna get into that too much, 'cause I'm just starting to look at those numbers, but based on what I'm seeing, um from this week, having the whole building, our lunch counts have basically gone up by about thirty thirty meals as well. So we are seeing a little bit spill over, you know, encouraging them to eat, um and and having them be kind of excited about what we have going on in the academy as well. So I think that's, you know, encouraging, I don't wanna read too much into it yet and get too hopeful, but.
Neil? I was just wondering if if you've been getting all the slips back from the students about we do lunch and stuff, we've had problems in the past?
We actually did, um I I didn't bring those numbers with us, but I know in our younger grades, obviously, it's a a lot easier, and I was really looking at our population in each of the buildings, um and I'm trying to just recall these off the top of my head, but I wanna say, when I looked at the full pay students in the primary school, um more than fifty percent of those had returned their applications, so I thought that was, you know, fairly reasonable. Um we, I wanna say that that population was like a sixty-eight percent of return overall. Then when we got into the elementary school, there was slight difference, it was hovering right around the, you know, the fifty fifty-six, fifty-seven. Um we certainly have a huge decline once we go up to the middle school, um the full price student was right around the mid-thirties, and the high school got down to eighteen. So there's, there really is a disconnect as the children are getting older and, you know, I I don't think that's any shock to any of us that have had teenagers. And there was only one application that came back that you could visibly see had the footprints that lost on the bus and came from by a lost driver, so that was encouraging, I think the envelope was a success. That was my question.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I did get some feedback on the envelopes, people seem to really like that as well for the private thing, so thank you.
Okay, for my report, Scott, my thunder on the wish to the breakfast, thank you. Uh and I'd like to encourage all board members to, if you can possibly, get out into the schools and visit some of the classrooms, uh you'll see some great stuff go on, I know, you know, life makes it difficult, but if you possibly can, uh just call the principal in advance usually, just to make sure that uh it's okay, and then everybody can put you with a teacher that would like to have you come in. Last Friday, I got to go to the elementary school, uh they did the student of the month, and they did a live Hungry Hungry Hippo thing, which was really cool. His daughter was a pride, I think she talked to your daughter, she sure did. Uh we have um bargaining coming up this this year with uh both cafeteria workers and the bus drivers, uh so those that are on the traditional bargaining uh group, committee, please uh keep your eye out, there'll be an announcement coming up soon, we're gonna have a meeting just to uh just kind of go over things where we're at and what we're gonna be doing, so. And that's all I have. I don't hear any reports of this, no? Yeah, and under policy, that actually, Lauren knows this, it's not not something that she messes up on, but that should be the second and final reading of the Buffalo and Amherst Policy GB, G A L. Yeah, and under policy, that actually, Lauren knows this, it's not something that she messes up on, but they should be in second and final reading of the Bloodborne Pathogens Policy GDGA. Scott went into the policy handbook and looked it up, and we actually only have to have two. And so tonight when you vote, we're actually voting to put this into the policy handbook. I do want to thank Lynn, took a lot of time reading through and changed a lot of punctuation and public and that, so.
No one's surprised by that.
So that said, I'd like a motion to accept the second and final reading of Bloodborne Pathogens Policy GDGA and place that into policy manual.
With changes?
With, yep. Motion by Alina, second by Ann. Any further discussion, any questions on that? Yes?
Just a comment. I don't know if it's possible, but in the past, sometimes we used to get a copy via email that showed track of the changes. So we could see the changes from one policy to what was new, to what was changed from the first reading to the second reading. I didn't know how difficult that'd be to have that happen. Because I know we're going to be coming through a lot of policies.
Literally the only changes on the first reading to the second reading were Lynn's punctuation, period, and.
But I know it won't be like that with all of us.
No, normally we do red lines. The red lines of the dates are big.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Thank you. Yeah.
And you have a discussion on this? All those in favor? Okay, under whole business, the revision energy solar contract, I asked Joel to address that for us, please.
I'll do the best I can. So we met with, and I can't remember his name, I don't.
Kirk.
Okay, whatever Scott said. The other night, it's kind of a follow-up to what we saw as a presentation there, I guess, two meetings ago. And in a sense, he gave a very similar presentation, but it gave us a chance to kind of talk through a lot more things and give us, it was with the Building and Grounds Committee, gave us a chance to talk through internally amongst a group of us with him, bouncing some things back and forth. Did get a chance to look at a, I'll call it a draft contract from them. Right now, legal is still going through a review of it. It is actually missing a few of the details that they know I was looking for in and around it. So from my perspective, anything we do tonight needs to factor in. We still need a legal finalization of our due. But a lot of it was just talking about what truly is this. And I know a lot of people always look to me because of my day job is energy, and that's what I do, have been for many, many years now. And I'll just start my perspective on this is, you got to recognize, this is a twenty-year asset. It's a scenario that I think was kind of brought to us very specifically because of the Southern Farm is the one who has this system going in over there. And they expressed interest in making sure part of this came towards us. The other part of it's going down to Camden Schools and whatnot. And I actually know somebody who's down on that board, and I talked to them the other day a little bit about where their head was on this. And from my perspective, they're in a very similar place that I am, is, and I'll just cut to the chase up front, and then I'll just talk about that a little bit after. From my vantage point, it's a twenty-year program, and it's going to save us some money. I mean, any way you look at it, with the scenarios behind it, it's going to save us some money. You got to recognize it's a twenty-year commitment. With that, we also just did a, basically a seventeen-year commitment with all these lights and all these other building upgrades we just did. So it's not that far out of the norm of what we, as a board, just did. And from, I think, all Scott's digging and whatnot, there's nothing that says we can't do a contract of this length. When you look at, I mean, this system is not going to be on our schools and our schools and whatnot. It truly, I know Ann picked up on it, it's truly a financial instrument that, if you have any familiarity with hedging or arbitrages and other stuff like that, which in my world, I deal with a fair amount of, as far as how you look forward with energy to kind of lock your cost and other things like that, that's really what this is. But it has something just up the road that we can link up to. And one thing they talked about us is there will be abilities to kind of connect them over the websites to look at what this is doing. They've somewhat committed to having us be able to go over there at times and do other type projects and learnings with it, which I think, from my perspective, learning about these types of things is a big thing. One of the biggest parts of it is, yes, it's a financial instrument. So how do you know you're going to save money? I mean, they keep talking about, consider this a gift card. Consider, I mean, I'm going to use his kind of terminology as far as, it's like you're buying a hundred-dollar gift card for eighty-five bucks. So you spend eighty-five bucks, and a little later you go spend a hundred on something. So in a sense, you made fifteen bucks. That's good and whatnot in a short-term sense. When you talk about a twenty-year sense, you got to, you got to expect, what is the world going to be between now and twenty years from now? And that's where I put my other hat on. And I'll pass a couple of things either way. I didn't bring them for everyone, but I didn't bring stuff from my world, but I brought stuff that is publicly available out there. And because when you look at that, let's say that eighty-five-dollar cost of what you're buying it for, it's based on some standard offer rates as well as some transmission, delivery, local distribution rates. That transmission, local distribution, the transmission stuff, if you ever look at your bill at home, it used to be years ago, you spent this much for energy and this much for getting it to your house. If you watch and look closely, that flip-flopped over the last five or so years where you're actually paying more to get it to your house than you're paying for what you're using. And that trend is, if you go to the last page of that thing I handed up to you, you can see the trend of what those transmission charges have done and what various companies have projected it's going to do going forward. For us, if those numbers keep going up, this becomes a bigger value to us going forward. And that's part of what I keep looking at is those charges, I mean, there's very little that you could ever say, construction costs aren't going down, equipment costs aren't going down, people are not going to stop using electricity, so they're going to keep building more. They want to put in more heat pumps in and around everywhere. I mean, my wife drives an EV hybrid car. There's going to be more cars coming around that you're going to charge at your house. The electrical infrastructure is going to be getting bigger in these next twenty years. And it's going to go exponential on a few of these things. So locking that in with the rates they're talking about, and yeah, energy, the actual electricity use, I can make some arguments it'll go down a little bit. I can make arguments it'll be equal. I'm not as focused on where that goes. It's, but it's the transmission. I'm, I mean, I can't give you uncertainty in life, but I can say everything I look at says it's going to go up. So I can't speak for every one of you. There's a level of risk to this. You've got to recognize on your own as far as are we willing to set up for this. It is something at our back door. Looking at the rates they're quoting us, look pretty attractive for, quote, buying that gift card. But it's something a lot of people got to wrap their heads around is what this, what this really is. But from my perspective, it is going to save us some money going forward.
Any questions, Joel? No. It's twenty years from when it starts, so it's going to be like a twenty-one-year commitment.
Yes, I mean, the other part he told us is they're quite suspicious that they will not get the system in this fall, which means it won't go until next year. And once it does start producing, it's a percentage of what it produces. And what they call this phase one part, that phase one part will be for us and for the Camden Schools. And we get a percentage of whatever that is. So if it's cloudy every single day and it's going to snow every single day, it'll make less. But a lot of these systems, they're getting set up. There is going to be a fixed aspect ratio, so it's not going to be some of the turning ones like you see in some other parts. I see them a lot up north, ugly. But it's, yes, it's, once we lock in, it's whenever it starts, and then it's twenty years.
So our, I'm concerned how this is going to interact with the Siemens. So Siemens said that with us, if we do not save money with our power bills, there was something with that construction cost. But that's for this current, correct?
Well, that's through the term of their agreement. But I mean, honestly, as I mentioned, you saw the power bills in this, and we got some of them at the Building and Grounds Committee. That was my biggest takeaway from these bills, is what we've actually already saved by that program. But this really doesn't link up directly because this is just, it's a financial piece of our bill. Don't think of it as a physical.
Still be able to see those reactions.
Yeah, remember, this is not connected to the, it's our meters are the same meters, and we'll still see, whatever we buy, we'll still be buying. That's the thing about it.
We're going to still negotiate an electric price with whoever we negotiate with. It has nothing to do with this. What we're doing, where, as he said in the card, we're just paying so much to get a bigger amount, and that will come off at the end of the bill. And then the other thing that happens that is, in the summertime, we don't use a lot of electricity. We get a buildup. We actually get some money in our account that we'll use later on in the wintertime when we're using a lot and they're not producing as much.
I just went down a few, you know, maybe you'll talk that a little bit. We wouldn't purchase all of our electricity on this card because we still want a vehicle to have the project to reduce the electrical energy in the future. We'd be a quarter, seventy-five, eighty percent, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a piece we do have to come up with, our exact kilowatt-hours we'd like to lock in. I mean, the trends I see right now from what the benefit we had from the Siemens project gives us a pretty good indication. We'll probably be a hair under that, I think, is the number we'd probably go with. I mean, you don't want to go too much above that because unless we're planning to put a lot of heat pumps and other air conditioning in everywhere else, so. No one, no one bet on that one, so.
Any other questions?
Just another, just another resource. Tina Riley is our state representative for Jaywoodmore, Woodmore Falls. She's a member of the Utilities Committee, and she was in Augusta for the legislation that was put through last year. So if you're looking for somebody, she's willing to come in and meet with either the whole board or the Buildings Committee.
Do you include in that pending legal review?
I make a motion to
Accept the revision.
Accept the revision to the energy solar contract.
Pending.
Pending the legal review.
Joel?
Well, I wasn't talking more about doing about one-hundred percent.
No, that was Camden.
Camden.
Camden was a hundred percent. He talked about doing between seventy-five and eighty percent.
We were talking a little bit. I don't know, I don't know. We talked about being a little bit lower.
Should that be a motion? I, honestly, my feeling is I think we should go as high as we can. Because as you said, this is a gain for us, the more we do.
My biggest question is, I don't think we have enough data yet based on what we've seen with Siemens for the benefits we already have. We're just getting into the first full fall, winter cycle with it. Because I think some of the savings weren't there yet if we were to just look at the last twelve months. So I think there, from my perspective, that said, could go a little bit lower. I don't know if I'd go quite, I mean, I was going into like the ninety, ninety-five range. But I don't know if we want to factor that in as a board or not, so.
I would, I guess, then I would say ninety-five, that's more.
Just a question for Ken. You said you were having some issues with Siemens and some of the savings we were seeing. Are you expecting a lot more savings as far as energy's concerned, if we get the whole system right?
I don't think you see a whole lot. I think we will see some, although some of the operations are working correctly right now. So I think you will see some.
Is that more on the heating side or the electrical side or what side?
It's just the heating side.
I just know we didn't have all the LEDs in when school started last year, and we picked a way at it. And we may have by about now. So my concern is if you just compare the bills over this last year, we might not be seeing all the savings and the ones we're looking at this time last year. So that's the only reason I felt we might want to go a hair lower, so.
But if we, if we, should we vote yes tonight? And they're not even ready to begin until next year, probably June, maybe, we'll have, that's when that is starting.
Yeah, I mean, there will be nothing available. The net metering credits won't become available until they start generating. And there's a commercial operation date that's in the contract and other things like that.
I think I heard Kurt say he just wants to know whether we're in favor of this project. I don't think, I think what I heard him say in the last meeting was, it would help us figure out the energy we're using so that we can make that determination later on. So I think he just wanted a definitive, if we want to agree with it. I don't know if he gave a presentation at the time.
So we could actually vote on percentages later on.
That's what I think he did, but I'm not sure.
That's what I gathered, is that they want a commitment that the board is interested in, that they'll fill in the details custom to what we need after.
Okay. I guess then really back to your original motion to accept the revision of solar, energy solar contract pending legal review. So we have open motion, yes?
Do we want to kind of do a slight amendment to that and the determination of a final percentage? That way we don't have to pick a percentage tonight?
I don't think that's what we asked before. I don't think that's what Kurt was asking with the meeting. So I think he just wants to know that we are for the project and we are going to give him that percentage. But it's up to you.
If you want to cover it, you can make that.
Yeah, I think we ought to have the amendment, factor that in. That way, there's a, there's a check and balance back with the board for that last final step, so. But at least to show that we're interested slash willing to continue this process.
Do you want to restate my motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to enter into a contract with revision energy, solar energy, pending legal review, with a determination of the percentage of usage later.
We have that motion. Do we have a second on that one? Laura? No. Second by Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? And?
Everybody accepted was a yes, except for Dale and Steve. Dale opposed and Steve abstained. All right?
And I entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss personnel matter pursuant to one MRSK4056N. So moved. My right, second, BB. All those in favor? All those in favor? And under business, we have a press here to present.
So the loud plan is for any students we have in the district that may be considered English language learners, it used to be, yes, all English was a second language until we changed it. Currently, for the last couple of years, we actually haven't had any students in the district that fall under this plan. However, the state still does like to check up on us how and then, and make sure this is a plan that, it doesn't have to be a policy, it just has to be a plan that's approved by the board, and the state checks up on you, and they chose this year to kind of check up on us, to make sure we have one. And so since it's a plan, basically all you do is send them the plan, and the board minutes that show that it was approved, and then, and then they'll consider that. Good. So we have to do that in November, we have to send them a copy of our plan, and the board approval. We actually had an old plan. I went back in the board minutes, original fund, book books, and just lots of big, little board minutes, went back to 2002, I, you know, you get a little sidetracked, because you're reading about some of these board meetings, you're like, oh, I remember that, but could not find anywhere that a loud plan had actually ever been approved by the board, going back to 2002, I think it was, so going back right away. So that's when we decided we better bring this one forward to be approved.
Any questions, Laura?
Does a student who speaks English in school but has a primary language other than English at home qualify for this assessment?
They can, yeah. What happens is, if, when they, when they come and sign up for school here, we have a part where they can mark off about language, and then we also have a letter with a form on it, it's called a home language survey, that goes home, and will ask, ask the parents what language does it speak, and what language is spoken at home, and if they say a different language is spoken at home, then they can, at that point, the parents actually can choose whether they want him involved, him or her involved, and then a D L L will allow plan, or if they feel that they don't need it, and what we do, we'll bring that up with them, see which way they like to go.
Joel? So basically, you're coming to us saying you're planning to develop a plan? Or is this the official?
This is the official plan.
Okay, it looks like it says create this, create that.
Yeah, yeah, it all kind of goes around, it's, they say it is like a living document, so you kind of just use this as your loud plan, and then when things come up, you kind of follow this template.
I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to create the loud plan for English language learners as written.
Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Lynn? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Laura, make sure you got the minutes.
You don't have such ideas. I just wanted to say, you know, this guy?
Wow.
We couldn't believe that it didn't have a sound like that.
He was too busy just looking at all those other notes, and he skipped right by. I think you should check again.
Okay. On 15 to a 15, turn, let Scott speak to that.
District referendum budget vote, looking to move that from the 21st to the 28th. Met with the town managers the other day, and we, when we were going over budget votes, we realized that that was over vacation time for schools. They didn't feel it was a good idea there, I think, at least one or two of the town managers might not be around at that time as well. As long as we're within 30 days of when we do our district vote, that we say that it's all right for the board, we're fine, so that's still fall within that 30-day range, so we can move that to the 28th and not affect that, and we have more people actually coming up for the vote, because people will be gone away on vacation.
And that also falls with the 15-3, moving the board being out of vacation week. So, Mike?
Do you want two separate votes?
Yes. Yeah. Do you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. So I move to move the district budget referendum vote from April 21st to April 28th.
Have a motion, have a second? Lena? Any further discussion on that? All those in?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, wait, wait.
On our agenda, it says 2019, it should say 2021.
Oh, you're right.
And that's also for 15-3.
It was Chris's fault. Okay, all those in favor? I believe that's unanimous. And Dr. Pierre Person, like?
I also move to move the regularly scheduled school board meeting on April 23rd, 2020, to April 30th, 2020.
Motion second, Lena? Any further discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. And Laura, would you, would you redo that now, to make sure that gets out to everyone?
Just a comment, when we create the school board calendar, has the, I mean, the school calendar, obviously, the school calendar is pretty standard in terms of when a vote actually happens. We just saw our lead, so should we just kind of be mindful of that? We can all take a look and pull out our calendars when you set this.
We would be mindful of that for next year, honestly.
Yeah.
I mean, being like this year, it was, yeah.
Yeah, this particular year, there's five Thursdays in April, that's what, you can remove it off this year.
And I know last year, we had a board meeting, the April vacation, and I did not settle on people myself, so.
Yeah, this year, I think people missed it, because it was five Thursdays.
And I entertain motions to go into executive session, discuss the personnel matter pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six A.
So moved.
Move my mic, second by Joel. And when you go in, would you please take this paper with you?
Hannah.
All those in favor? Take one FYI. Sports, hopefully. And? And we have 16-2, superintendent nominates Harley Thibodeau to the position of Spurston Primary School IT guy and intervention teacher. Mike?
I move to accept the superintendent's nomination.
Motion, Doug seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And? This is Aaron. You ready for Tor?